Also coming to meeting tonight. We have a lower than that. Board members here are being considered for. We just had a request from Buenos Aires to, are there any amendments to be done? All right. Request from the panel to. Go around the table. Who we are and which town we not event. So. Here. Paul Allen, I represent the Redding.
Matt Stone, Woodstock.
Yes, I've been a colleague. He's not one of the resident and Woodstock. Carrie Bristow would stop.
That's all of them. I think you're all sitting around. Oh, I thought she's shooting up. Scott, what is this? I don't know. Only one of us. Scott Williams. Scott, what's that?
Is there a lot of contact?
Okay. Yes.
Other important ones online, please.
Ernesta Fernandez, Woodstock.
Adam Emily from Reading.
Janoski, Woodstock.
Joe Griffin, Abram, Slimmin.
Okay, I think I confused you all. Witness asking for the board members to introduce themselves.
Good evening, all. This is Anna representing Reading.
Dan Carl representing Killington.
All right. Thank you, all. We're going to start with a public comment time, which is for any comments or questions not related to the WHS MS presentation tonight. If you are using Zoom, we would appreciate that you would put it in the chat and then we will read your question as they come in. Yes.
Back when you all started, just why didn't you ever ask the local contractors to come in and give their approval, their appreciation of how the building's being either your partners, your contractors, your electrician, your your naces or whatever. Instead of just either tell their outside engineer to do something. I mean, we're all taxpayers. We built this school together. You know, they know more about the structural building than any architect will ever know. And you've never had a site engineer come in and drilling the testing of this building. Structurally, this building is on. It do fall, but the maintenance of this whole building is just gone downhill.
That's a question.
Back in when Steve Troutman was going there, you cut his budget just so you could give the new principal a bigger place. So. You always have maintenance. You always have maintenance.
We're not taking that question until the building.
Why didn't you hire the local artists working?
Public comment. Right now it's supposed to be about anything but the new building. Then we're.
They're gonna have new buildings. Why didn't you ask the local people, taxpayers that work here, please, the blue collar flavors, who help put input into maybe renovation?
And that's relative to the new build, which is, we have a public comment period for that after the presentation. Right now, public comment is for anything that does not have to do with building or grounds.
No, public comment is, you haven't done your names. That's all it says.
I have a question.
Yes.
Jim Haff. Just for the record, to make it straight, Mr. Fenn, you were not here my last few, like, prior to my last year of being on the board. I really don't appreciate you putting in a newspaper that there was only work done on the study for energy saving. You were not here when I was up on the roof with JCI. You were not here when I went through with the windows. You were not here when we went through all the other work. When I did ask you a question about the policy of going forward for a bid. You said you could not answer the question because you were not here and you did not know what the rules were or the policy at the time. But you were sure fast enough to pull the trigger to say that a board member that was on this board for 15 years. Spent many hours working on a deal with JCI to come out and say that Jim Haff is a liar. I'd just like to go on the record to say you were not here, so you were not a liar, but you shouldn't have represented yourself on something you did not know. I don't need a response back. Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'll let this other public comment. Is there anyone?
Yes. I. I'm just gonna read this round because I'm terrible. No, that's fine. My name is Katie Stiles and I'm the parent to a current KES preschooler attending through the Act One Sixty Six program. My child has loved his time at KES and back in March, I sent an email to the MDSC school board requesting the district to consider allowing students to live out of district to attend the school via tuition beyond the Act One Sixty Six program. I attended the school board meeting in person on April first to formally put in my request to pay tuition for my son to attend KES. At that meeting, I was told the matter would be discussed further by the board and that they would be in touch. Over the next 61 days, I followed up regularly via email for any more information about my request. Emails were consistently left unanswered until recently, when I sent the following. Following up on this again, please let me know if I should be directing my inquiry somewhere else. As the year end quickly approaches, we would like to be able to prepare our son for the upcoming school year and lock down our plan as a family. He is five and he needs to say goodbye to his friends and teachers. I would like him to do so, feeling empowered and prepared. I'm appreciative of all you do and I understand there. Sorry, I can't hear her. Please. Thank you. Sorry. I'm appreciative of all you do and I understand there are multiple layers to our inquiry. We would really appreciate any information you can provide. And the response I got to that was, good afternoon, Katie, please forgive the delay in answering your emails. At this time, we cannot accept out of district students as tuition students until grade nine. I understand that is not the answer you were hoping for, but it is complicated. Thank you for your patience and hope that your son makes a smooth transition. My follow-up inquiry for more information and an in-person meeting about how this determination was reached was answered with an email telling me the board would be in touch with more information. I have yet to receive that information. I understand their quest of a single person falls from the bottom of the list when you're looking at the future and well-being of an entire middle and high school student body population. But given that the state of Vermont Department of Education has no formal policy on tuitioning, rather leaving them to district choice. And given that this current district is actively pursuing financing for a very large project and provides for chat for students when the overall student population is in a decline. I'm again formally requesting an explanation of the decision and how it was reached. At the budget conversation, so if they follow this agenda item for open comment, I wanted to share our experience as a family.
Thank you, Katie. Anybody else? Yes.
My name is Kelly. Number one, I still haven't received my documentation that I requested three months or four months ago. For what the policy is as far as sporting events and having security here. And number two is how come? The state was in here a couple of years ago and I have all the information now and I'm going to share it as many people as I can. That it was only going to cost $12 million to do all the renovations that were needed to this building. He's bringing it back up there.
Okay, again, Kelly, we, before you came in, we're taking all public comment related to the building and the projects after the presentation.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, isn't it typical that no one responds to the questions asked? I mean, what's the purpose of these meetings if our questions aren't being addressed? Is it happening at the end? Can you just let me know how that works?
We listen to what's being said and if we feel appropriate to follow up, we follow up usually individually or we discuss it further as a board when we have time to take up those matters.
Right, but that's what we're here for right now.
All right. At this time then, we are going to move into the WHS MS options presentation. I'll ask them, sitting here to introduce themselves and who they represent, and then they will be presenting. And then the board will have time to talk and ask questions probably after your presentation, preferably. And then there will be public comment that will be taken as well.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Marty Spalding. I'm the co-owner of PCI Capital Project Consulting, where we've been retained by the school district to act as the owner's representative to help them through their construction project. We will retain shortly prior to the March bond vote. And now we're working with the school district through their, this planning process to determine the next steps to get to a future bond vote. Based on, you know, what decision comes out of this, this meeting tonight and at the next board meeting. So following the March bond vote, the school district put out a survey to the community members to get a sense of what the community members were looking for. Around, you know, why the bond might have failed. One of the takeaways was that they were looking for more options to be considered. So in 2017, an extensive study was done by the architect, which is Lee Sherwood from LaValle, Rensselaer. I believe Lee is online with us. So that study looked at options to include renovations as well as a few conceptual designs. Obviously, construction costs and lots of factors have changed since 2017. So part of our strategic, strategic planning process was to update some of those options to today's current pricing. So I'm going to also introduce, this is Paul Stafford. He's been the lead on the project. Paul's going to walk us through the presentation we have here. This is Kurt Mazer. Kurt is from PC Construction, which is different from PCI Construction. They're the construction project management firm that has been hired to oversee the ultimate project. So Kurt did the cost estimating for the construction side of these four options that we're going to present to you tonight. And then we did the soft cost of construction cost estimates for those options. So let me share my screen. There we go. You see that up there, all right? Yes. Well, you go ahead, Paul, and talk through the the options that we're focusing on. I will also mention, sorry, that there's a one-page handout that goes through the four options that we're exploring. It's a high-level cost estimate as well as a breakdown for the duration of the construction until potentially be moving into those phases.
Thank you. Again, I'm Paul Stafford. I'm the project manager for Mountain View, Woodstock High School and Middle School. What we did as a committee shortly after the, the bond vote was met onsite and toured this facility. We saw lots of major issues to the point where a Band-Aid approach will not fix this facility. So, and you know, it's a, it's a milestone type of project for this community, not for this school district. So we all collectively, including many of the board members here, developed a strategy to look at basically three options. Looking at renovating the existing facility. Option two was to look at a hybrid option of taking just the high school and putting it somewhere onsite and utilizing the middle school and high school during construction, similar to option three. Option three, which is the bond vote, looking at what the cost would be a year from now to construct that facility. And then look at absolutely everything that we could strip it from without losing programmatic spaces. So those are the three options. There's really four when you, when you factor in the fact that we're looking at a three A and a three B, the bond vote. Okay, so the first option we looked at was option one, which is the existing building. Now this, we'll go to the next slide. This building has to stay operational during construction. So there's several aspects of this, this project that some of which was covered in the original master plan. I think there were six phases identified in the original master plan. PC Construction is, is proposing seven phases over a four and a half year period to renovate this facility intact. Okay, go back. So that, those were the phases on this screen before. But the, you'll be shocked at the number, the construction estimate for renovating the existing building as it's without touching the athletic facilities or doing any geothermal is 82.3 million. Much of that has to do with the construction duration and the cost to provide temporary swing classrooms during construction. As well as construction escalation costs beyond a typical two-year window. Renovated square feet in total is 130,000 square feet. That equates to 779. I think on past presentations, that is in line with other school projects throughout the state. The design duration of this building is, what is the renovation is not designed right now. So there would be a year and a half of architectural design that would be required. And then I talked about the four and a half year period. So you're looking at a completion date of August, September, 2030, if you were to approach this. In order to compare it to the bond vote, the committee suggested looking at adding geothermal and the athletic fields to the renovation. So that added approximately another $5 million of construction. The duration is the same. The completion date is the same. And then the dollars per square foot obviously went up because of the two eight sixteen a square foot.
All right. Just a little additional detail on the first option. Without the geothermal, it also doesn't assume that you'd be adding cooling to the building. And so no cooling as well.
Right. Whereas option B, one B would have cool. All right. So option two. We actually looked at two options for option two. One of which, again, always keeps a middle school and high school intact during construction. But one option that was suggested was to connect a new high school to the existing middle school. And then eventually tear down the high school. That option was not considered to be brought in front of the full school board for many reasons. We can go into that more, but today we are presenting the freestanding high school and keeping the existing middle school. And I should add the renovation to the existing school as an option one. That is a full stripped down option. That is complete replacement of all the doors and windows, complete replacement of the roof and the building envelope to some degree upgrades to current standards. Structural changes for structural deficiencies in the gymnasium. This option, option two for the middle school, only addresses finishes and some minor mechanical upgrades for the middle school. So again, the costs are still high. Construction estimate is at 76 million for, with a total of 70,000 square foot of renovation, minor renovation in the middle school. And 90,000 square foot new high school as depicted in this image. You can slightly see in this image a ghosted footprint for a future middle school yet to be determined in this option and not priced in this option. Total square foot is lower. So it's, it's $575 a square foot. Design duration is again, a year and a half because right now it's as far as this boulder diagram. Then the construction duration would be two phases. For first two years for construction and one year for demolition of the existing. So it's a little bit confusing to start. It's a total of three years, but the demolition duration is one year of that too. Also, because of the fact that it becomes a campus-like environment, there are some additional staffing increases that would have to happen with this option. As well as some one-time costs to support both facilities. And annual operating cost loss is about $400,000 per year to run two, two buildings on one campus. So. Yeah. Now, option three is, is the most simple to understand. That's the bond vote. The only difference is we included that it's starting in 2026 instead of 2025. That put a 5% construction and escalation on the number. So we're at, we were at 90 million. We're now at 94.9 million. So now we're over 100 million. We're at 105 million for a potential bond vote. The time duration is the projects in design development, which means nearly completed for construction documents. So the remainder 10-month period would be to complete those construction documents. There were some cuts made in this option three even for the bond vote, which was not reflected in the original design documents. Those would have to be incorporated into the construction documents. Construction duration is still two years. So that puts us in July, August of 2027. There is also included in that timeframe a one-year demolition duration, which is actually outside of the construction duration. That's, so it's a total of three years. Option three B is the committee's approach to strip as much of the bond vote option to bare bones. So you'll see this lifting in the lower right of the screen of what items are considered at this point. And again, none of this is, has been cut yet. These are all just considerations. If you recall from that bond vote, there was a half a wing that was cut off of the building. It was the art languages wing. This approach would take the remainder of that wing. Again, there's some programmatic elements associated with that, which we'll go into in a little bit. The office wing also is eliminated to one story. That would mean counseling would go on the first floor and the Mountain View's administrative offices would, would remain in their current facility. And there is an elimination of a second floor conference and lounge area of 400,000. We have considered going to a flat roof building throughout at 200,000. Reduction of stage lighting. Again, the auditorium would still have lighting. There just was some lighting remaining still on the construction budget, which we took about half of that out again. And then there was about a million dollars of targeted value engineering items yet to be determined. But we would, PCI would work closely with PC Construction to make that happen if we were going that route. Total reduction of 4.4 million. Total reduction in square feet from 158 to 84, to 150,000 square feet. That puts us at a cost of construction roughly about the same as bond vote of $669 per square foot. I should add too, and the salt costs, if you look at the salt cost, original construction budget, it was a bit hot, a bit lower than this number. We added some additional contingencies to that salt cost number. All right. So option one, again, we looked at both the pros and cons for it. Again, this is the existing building option. So the pros to that is obviously little impact to surrounding site, including athletic fields, because you can use those still. Except for one, which would be a lay down area, even if we were to do the existing building renovation. It preserves the legacy of the building. It also potentially reduces the environmental impact of the demolition for the, versus demolishing the entire building. The cons are the construction phasing cost is costly, mostly in part of the four and a half year duration. Temporary classrooms are costly. Right now, this budget shows a $10.6 million figure for the provision of temporary classrooms. And I should have had that scored eight to 10 of those flex classroom spaces when we're renovating the building as phases. Hidden problems may be costly due to change orders. We, the only thing we can tie into construction documents is what can be seen. So any existing additions are, we're utilizing plumbing systems that were put in in 1958 or 1968. If I hope or not with this renovation, but if we did, it's going to cause change orders. It's a longer disruption to students over a longer period of time. You basically have one senior class that will not have an experience. Does not meet current goals for modern teaching and learning. Again, this renovation would maintain all the spaces as they are, just renovate the mechanical, long and electrical. Probably change around a little bit of spaces, but not much. Difficult to attract and retain new students with an existing facility. It does not capture the natural views of the surrounding mountains due to its original orientation. And it will require complete replacement in a shorter period over a new building. Now let me talk a little bit about that. So a new building right now, you're probably going to get 40 to 50 years out of it, of a life cycle cost. The existing building, you will get a 40 to 50-year-old turnaround on new mechanical, new electrical. What you're not going to get a 50-year turnaround on is the existing building in total. Yeah, we'll put on a 30 or 40-year-old roof, you know, new roof that will last 30 or 40 years. We'll reset the window bar, you know, putting in all new windows and doors. Finishes will be nice. But again, it's not a new building. All right. Option two. Again, this is for the hybrid building. So it's just the high school on the football fields right now. The pros aren't a pace approach. We'll definitely save dollars. It's a minimal impact to current school operation because it's remote to the existing campus. It orients the building correctly, less disruption to existing campus. Separate middle school and high school experience, which is nice. Allows for drawing new students to the high school. Phase approach with a smaller three-story building. And the middle school allows for greater enrollment potentially in the future to 800 plus. Or conversely, if enrollment's smaller, we can build a smaller middle school. Longer repayment term, which means lower tax impact. Those are all pros for option two. The cons are, obviously, the existing football field will require replacement. Duplication of the cafeteria is going to have to happen, which means more staff than operating costs. Some phasing and project disruption, increasing costs. More difficult to recruit and retain new students due to the middle school. And redesign will take more time and money and that could go to bond in March 2025. What I mean by that is we would recommend that if you pick this option, that you did, like you did similarly for the bond vote and authorize. that if you pick this option, that you did like you did similarly for the bond vote and authorize design so that we could have accurate numbers in March twenty twenty-five. Option three and three B. Again, option three is the existing bond vote, so the pros are the Vermont Agency of Education has already approved this design. That will potentially help in state funding if and when it becomes available, and that's a huge probably, to be honest with you, you, you're not gonna get any additional funding uh, in the foreseeable future. I'm sorry to say that. It's just true. Design development is complete and stakeholders, including community and staff, approve of this direction. Lot of programming went into this building, a lot of time spent on a good design. Design utilities use utilize the latest technology, including geothermal, solar. Um, very energy-efficient mechanical systems. Uh, design orientation capitalizes the mountain views and the surrounding land. Less disruption on existing campus operation because of its remoteness. And it could be a potential September bond though. The the cons are, you know, design relies on complete replacement of the middle school and high school. It's harder to phase. The existing football field again would require replacement. And obviously, the voters have spoken, so additional cuts may help make this pass, but uh, that's all I'll say on that. Option three B is the pros are the design development is complete, stakeholders, including community and staff have already approved this direction. It's design utilizes the latest technology. Design orientation is the same, less disruption to existing campus operation. The total, and the potential September bond still applies. We've confirmed that with the architect, that if this option three B was selected. It still is a ten-month duration for completion of design. The cons are, again, it relies on the complete replacement. Football fields impact, programmatic implications to reduce the art wing may impact the language and art programs, including recruitment to the new middle school and high school. And then the roofline changes may be a minor thing to some of you as an architect. You know, it could potentially be a big deal. Um, to be honest with you, it was about a five-hundred-thousand-dollar savings, but because of adding additional plumbing lines to drain that black room, you're reading that's a potential savings. All right, next steps.
Yeah, sure. And this is just kind of zooming out, you know, why are we having this? I, you know, the, in terms of the timing, you can see here on the slide. You know, we're at June third tonight, moved to get the information and pricing. This was the big development for this evening. And then in two weeks, we're looking at a special board meeting. Typically, we leave once a month, but the board has committee meetings. Um, you know, in the, in the, in the two weeks between the board meetings, so we purpose that uh, for the uh, the potential to be able to make a decision on one of these options. And potentially a timing for a bond vote. And in that window between tomorrow and that, that, that meeting in two weeks. Uh, we're looking to our board members to speak with members of the community. We'll certainly hear probably a number of opinions this evening. And you'll come back as informed board members to be able to engage in a discussion and potentially make a decision. Now, you see this, you know, possible special election bond vote September. That's something you know, that is like, as Paul through the presentation, actually the earliest that, you know, this board can really make a decision to take something back to the voters. So we're kind of flagging that. That that doesn't mean that this board is, has committed to taking something and vote in September. Or, you know, in, in March of next year, that matter, we need to look at the information that's been provided and make decisions as a board. That's the timeline.
Just want to add a couple of other things too. First and foremost, there's four options here. We can have forty options. You know, there is a lot of possible options, options out there. So, and as we're going through this process, PCI has really tried to keep the, all the options flowing out of the, the committee and community, having some sidebar conversations. So even though we're presenting these four options, there's a lot of ways to skin this cap. So we welcome all, any or all options on the table. Second thing is, is this committee did not select an option. So that's up to the school board and this community. So don't think that we already have a preconceived notion of what we wanted to. All options are good options at this point.
Yep. At this time, the board has the opportunity to ask questions and make comments uh, in order to hear everyone's thoughts and questions tonight during board questions and public comment. We will be timing for three minutes of speech with a warning at the two-minute thirty-second mark to let you know that you need to wrap it up. Uh, let's try to keep repetition of questions and comments down. We don't need to hear the same comment over and over again. Once is enough. Each person has one question they can ask and won't be called on again until everyone else has had a first question. Uh, when we get to public comment, please state your name and your town. And those who are on Zoom, we ask that you put your question in. Um, so that we can read your question out loud and they'll be read in the order in which they are received. I do want to remind everyone that this is a civil meeting. It's a civil board meeting. We expect people to state their opinions. We welcome that, but we would appreciate if you would keep it civil tonight. Thank you. Elliot.
Yeah. I'm here, Ruben from Plymouth. I just have a question is, are there any scenarios of renovations that are less expensive than what was outlined? That are entertained, that are, you know, tens of millions of dollars last.
The goal was to look at comparing the renovation option to, for the building to hopefully last as long as the, as the new build option. For the purpose of assuming that you're gonna bond for that over like a thirty-year term. So you need those upgrades to last that long. If you looked at other options, probably you wouldn't actually go to bond for that. You'd actually build a capital plan in your general fund and operating cost.
Anyone else from the board?
Um, so under option two, with the renovations that you were due to the middle school, how long do you think the middle school could keep going?
I think you would have to continue to add some funds to your general fund budget to keep that building operational through that period of time. And then kind of depending on how long some money you, you know, add into your operating costs would determine, you know, depend on how long that building uh, will remain in use, like for, you know, a roof as an example. You just can't continue, you can't keep pushing that down the line at some point in time, you know, depending on the existing condition of the roof. You need to put money, funds into your general fund budget to replace that.
And let's say all the mechanical systems for the new high school, we're thinking about a freestanding plant that would run the middle school because the mechanical system is in the nineteen fifty-eight building for the middle school right now. So um, we would have to address that if we took down the high school. Um, that will probably buy you at least fifteen years, probably longer before you have to really do a complete renovation or replacement of a middle school.
Yeah. Yeah, and in option two B, we, we added in that central heating plant addition. So that, that money is, is priced in that to.
But to answer your question too, that may be a consideration too. It's to scale back on the plumbing, mechanical, electrical in the renovation. If we had to bring down costs. Uh, and I'm just telling you, there's a lot of really antiquated systems in this building now.
And one of the reasons why, we should point out, one of the reasons why we're really only addressing like the interior finishes of the middle school has to do with the level of construction that you do to a facility that triggers you to bring that facility up to current code. Like the level that we're proposing in the high school is to bring that in the renovation option is to bring the building up to, up to current code. And I'll give you an example. When replacing a roof, typically you also want to look at adding insulation to that would be in order to meet the energy code for the building. Sometimes when adding that insulation, you also have to look at the, you know, structural requirements. And sometimes that, because you're adding more weight to the insulation, then you have to add more roof leaders or your drains to reduce the weight on the roof. So that upgrade and, and, you know, incorporates the assumption that you're bringing everything up to that current code. Where the middle school, the middle school option, the hardwood option, doesn't assume that you're gonna bring those, you know, the systems up to that, those current requirements.
Which, which design benefits the student side of the attendance the most? With the variation in size, separate location, you're looking at which are the whole construction process and, and develop with one best education.
Well, I would say the complete new build would provide the most program upgrades to the, you know, student um, experience. Definitely the, the hybrid option uh, would assume bringing those, those same programmatic upgrades to the, to the high school, but just, but not.
Um, I have a question. And option three B, which is the existing bond design, but further scaled back. How many students would that building be designed for under that configuration?
Um, I don't know the total number of students, but I know it's, it's not includes from what was brought to bond. Uh, there's a few programs that are cut out of that option. Uh, one of which is like the administration would remain in the current central office building. So that's not really a reduction of, of student capacity. Um, and a couple of other. Yeah, go ahead, Jerry.
Unfortunately, because we find the CD impact, it would mean a reduction of a wellness classroom, the community kitchen. Uh, the core room would move into, the course room would move into the green room, the changing computer. Um, we would have smaller senior spaces, a place for balcony to get out of senior space. We wouldn't have a faculty conference room and the world languages, we were able to move pivot the art rooms into the, that world language section, but the world language classrooms would not have external windows. They would have light from skylights. So those were the impacts of losing that section of the building and reducing the other spaces. We, rather than having counseling on that first floor, we and I discussed having housing right in the center of the building. So we have greater student access. So the only classroom reduction would be a wellness classroom, or two wellness classrooms, a course room and community kitchen space.
Richard, please speak to why option one A and one B and two B all include the renovation of baseball and athletic facilities. While um, the new construction option does not include any reference to fields and athletic facilities.
Yeah, I can take that one. Um, yeah, so, so the renovations for the baseball and other athletic facilities are built into option three A and three D. Uh, as part of the, the overall plan, those included with the bond vote initially. So it's, it's mostly to get the other options apples to apples with that level of athletic bench.
Thank you.
That brings up a good point, though, with the option one, the existing buildings. There's a very, there's a much larger construction contingency in these cost estimates. Um, upwards of, I think it's ten million, isn't it? Ten percent of the total, so. So eighty-two million, eight, eight-point-two-million-dollar contingency in options one A and one B.
Anna has her hand up.
Thanks for recognizing my hand. Um, I just wanted to bring this up as I'm looking. I took some screenshots and I've been able to swipe around and look more at the information. Um, I was really hopeful at the hybrid option as, as we started talking about it at a school board level. Um, I was also excited about the cost per square foot. And then I realized that it's ninety-one million dollars going on ninety-two million dollars. Which, when you compare it to either of the new build options, is only a difference of like nine to fourteen million dollars. And it's only replacing one building. And as we're hearing, you know, we're replacing the new high school, but then we wouldn't get a, a new middle school, which is then we're looking at having to replace a whole nother building in maybe ten, twelve years and all of the maintenance fees that goes along with it. As a representative of our taxpayers, this to me is not an efficient and financially sound decision. It seems crazy to spend nearly the same amount replacing a single building as opposed to replacing both of the buildings. And so I just wanted to bring that to, to everybody's attention that, well, the square footage dollars looks great. And again, we were really excited about the hybrid option, and this is of course to no fault of the designers and the builders. But this cost really is not a smart financial decision for our taxpayers. Thank you.
Ian. How has her hand up?
Hi there. Um, thanks for this. Can you just say a little bit more about what goes into the soft costs? I noticed that for the option three, the soft costs were quite a bit lower than the other soft cost options. So I just wanted to understand what goes into that.
Um, yep, I, I can speak to that. So we do have some additional slides showing the soft cost for each of the options. A couple of the different drivers in option one. This bear with us.
No, sorry. I'm trying to get rid of that.
So a couple of the drivers in the soft cost have to do with the the length of the project, like because the project is gonna be, the renovation option is, is gonna be phased over four-and-a-half years. That obviously drives a lot of soft costs as well. And as Paul just mentioned, we also have a higher contingency in this option, a ten percent contingency because dealing with a renovation of all the unknown factors, you know, having a appropriate contingency is um, important and no design has gone into this whatsoever. So um, nobody's really done that level of evaluation of the existing systems to, you know, put, put a hard number, you know, most of these costs were estimated at a, at a high level, construction per square footage cost. Is that, is that answered to your question?
Yeah, so I understand the higher contingency in option one, because, you know, as you're renovating old systems and things, things will be more complicated than you envisioned. That makes sense. And then option two also has higher soft costs than option three, even though they're both new builds.
Yeah, some of that is driven by the length of time to do the project, and that has to do with option two is also not been designed yet. Um, so there's not, there's, there's not only, you know, additional cost because it's gonna take longer to, to do that overall construction. It also hasn't been designed like the current third option. Uh, the current, the current option that went to bond has been Uh current, the current option um that went to bond has been about seventy-five percent design through design development, like it's almost ready to go to what's called the construction documents. And this option hasn't been designed at all, so there's additional costs on the design side.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the board with the first question? Anna, is your hand up again?
Sure is. Are you ready for my second comment, or do you want to go to Corinne?
Yes, I think everyone's on pause right now. Corinne, well, Corinne could go first and then you, Anna.
Sounds great.
Thanks. Yeah, I just missed. Um I wondered if Sherry could repeat. Um there was a comment she made about this, I think was related to option three B, the um maybe part of the four point four million reduction of the the um the current bond design plan. What was the comment about the chorus room and community kitchen space? Was that part of that uh four point four million reduction is eliminating those two rooms? Or was it something?
The community classroom that was on the community kitchen that was located on the second floor, which is access programs that would be eliminated. We had some ideas about building a possible space within the existing cafeteria closer, but it wouldn't be a full uh working kitchen. The coral room that currently is on located on the second floor, that would become a world language classroom. So the space that was on the first floor designated as a um green room where they prepare for their theater productions and changing would could be also used as a course room. Um and then some of the other spaces like senior space would be that along the balcony, um we wouldn't have a faculty room or conference room. Um and the world language room wouldn't have windows, it would be skylights from the hallway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'm gonna use my uh my second chance to speak to add on to what I was already speaking to and the fact that um right, if we're gonna use our money efficiently, spending two extra years on construction costs to have a less complete product at the end. Um just doesn't, again, you know, taxpayer dollars are going into this, I would much rather have a a final product and spend about the same amount of money. And on top of that, when we think about our students, they're gonna have two less years of disruptions. Um and you know, there's no guarantee in that, you know, recruiting new students, but we're more likely to do that with, you know, a a full, complete new campus as opposed to a single building. Um you know, when we think about student experience, we're talking about, you know, loss of of experiences based on where they are in the buildings, based on you know, the timeline of the rebuilds or the renovations or the new builds or however we do this. Um but really, we're not only are we using our money more efficiently, we're also making it a better experience for our students and our staff. So, thank you.
So it's a very valid point. So one of the things that you'd be let's say throwing away if you went with this other option would be all of the design costs that have gone into the the current option that went out to the voters. Um and then escalation is is a is a real cost. So, you know, adding two years to this project really adds a significant amount of cost as you saw in the the option um three, just the amount of escalation that has gone into um, you know, starting that project later because it didn't pass in March.
And the board members?
We did a lot of work on the cost per square foot for the new build and how it compared to other similar facilities around the country and around New England. This dollar per square foot for a full renovation, seven hundred and seventy-nine. Do you have any comparable transactions of full renovations, what they cost?
Yeah, I'll take that one. Um right, so so that value, that dollar per square foot includes the soft cost. Normally, when I look at it, it's construction cost only. So in uh the option three um series here, the the construction cost was five hundred and fifty-eight dollars per square foot. Which for Vermont is is in the range of what we're seeing, you know, I I know Burlington High School is is very high from a construction cost per square foot standpoint. Um in New England, looking, you know, out outside of Vermont, I know schools down in Massachusetts, starting prices per square foot are eight hundred bucks a square foot up to a thousand. Um so we're certainly coming in below that. Uh there's other states uh like the state of Maine that has a little more efficiency in their in their cost. Um but Vermont is very special, very unique from the standpoint of our our labor resources are are tight, and that's driving some of the higher construction costs for the state. But overall, it's it's on par with what we're seeing in the state.
So it's typical for the renovation to cost more dollars per square foot than a new build?
How much of that building is able to be salvaged in that renovation?
Right, and and on the construction cost side for option one, say, with the with the full renovation of bringing up to today's code standards, uh we were in the neighborhood of uh four hundred and fifty-four dollars a square foot compared to the uh five fifty-eight. So it is coming in at uh less expensively, but there is higher higher soft costs for the renovations.
And that was the four-year duration temporary student housing and escalation and like.
That's right. Yep. Yeah, so we we have in the construction costs for option one, we have the, we have the temporary classrooms and them and and them being in place for four and a half years, so that's a considerable chunk of money. Um and yeah, so we we have that built in on the construction cost. That's in addition to the uh four fifty-four per square foot. Would would you guys be able to potentially build a high school on the football field as part of the tunnel without uh well, school going on itself, like in the current school as it is, you guys they'll build just a high school. For now, uh would it be sensible adding up that in the future? And would that, would you be able to do so while eliminating the trailers for the students and all that other stuff, because they should be able to stay in this school, right?
They, you're talking about the hybrid option, correct? Yeah, the intent would to not have to use temporary trailers in this option so that the students would remain in the existing high school until the the new building is built. And then probably the middle school students would have to shift into that existing high school while renovations are done to the middle school. And then you ship the students into their, you know, renovated, you know, newer space and then demolish the high school.
Yeah, and and really option two B was was building that high school in on on the football field. Keeping the existing building intact uh so that stool, school could proceed, you know, as it does day to day. Uh get the high, get the new high school building complete. And then, yes, move the middle school students over to the high school wing because the high school students are now in the new high school. Renovate the middle school wing to the standpoint of, we're talking flooring, ceiling. Um it's it's not bringing it up to up to today's code standards in option two B. Um and then once that middle school renovation is done, moving the middle schoolers back from the high school wing back over to the middle school, and then the high school wing would get demolished.
Any other question from the board? Okay, Joshua.
Now, on two B, there's a um central heating plant addition at two point five million. Was there never an option that would be able to eliminate that, or is there no way to eliminate that by having a high school power than the middle school?
Yeah, so that that's, that's something that we we looked at with option two B. Because with the high school wing coming down, that's where the central heating plant is is currently. Um so the plan with that would be to build a annex off of the side as new construction with a new central heating plant there. Um the advantage of that is everything is brand new, you're working in uh you know, basically a a a twelve greenfield type space with that annex. So everything could be brand new. So from that standpoint, it's a nicer and longer lasting solution. I don't know if that does that fully answer your question.
Yeah, just wondering if there was, there was no way to like get rid of that, you know, to have that high school power that the middle school has currently does, that's all.
Okay, yeah, let me, let me take that a step further. Yeah, so the high school that would be built in the on the football field to keep costs down, we're focusing on just building out what's necessary to to satisfy that building. So in the future, if there is a middle school built off next to it where the the yellow shading is, that would have its own mechanical system that's for that building. We're we're trying to, we're trying to right-size the mechanical system to the point where you're not building more than you need on day one.
Anyone else? You went on Zoom? On the board? Do you want to have any final comments before we
I don't have any final comments. I do have one comment. We did look at with option one of utilizing the existing arena, uh hockey arena instead of employing uh mobile classrooms. And the costs were even higher. So, and also reductions in the phasing to bring it back into like a a two or three-year window versus a four and a half. And just the costs are crazy high to build temporary facilities in that arena. So we scrapped that idea.
All right, um in a minute, we'll open for uh public comment. And I just want to read something from the state guidelines. If you are speaking from the fourth floor, please um identify yourself and your town clearly, so our clerk can report that. We are going to ask you to limit your time to three minutes with a warning at twenty thirty seconds to three minutes. Again, it will be the same as the board. If you've already spoken once, we'll wait till everyone else has had a chance to ask or make their comments. If you're on Zoom, please put your question in the chat, then Ford will be monitoring the chat and he'll will interject when appropriate to get your question in. And then if you would need to speak to anything to clarify that, you would be welcome to do it, do that if necessary. From the um I'm just gonna read this out loud one more time. Order and decorum shall be observed by all persons present at the meeting. Neither members of the board nor the members of the public shall delay or interrupt the proceedings or the peace of the meeting or interrupt or disturb any member while speaking. Members of the board and members of the public are prohibited from making personal impertinent threatening or profane remarks. Um I will be recognizing the people, so please don't just launch your question until you've been recognized and has said your name and your town. Thank you. So we're now open for public comment. Yes. Go ahead.
Mark Weinstein, which is Dr. Vermont. Uh I'm gonna talk about financing because I think that's really important. I appreciate everything they did. There are a couple of bills that went through the House recently, and I emailed them to some board members. One of the bills was H eight seventy-one, which actually was signed into law today by the governor. The other ones was eight eighty-seven, which is the yield bill. I'm just gonna quote some of the sections that I think are pertinent if we go ahead with option three. Uh H seventy-one uh section four creates a seven-member state aid school construct, school construction working group to study and design a state plan for new statewide school construction aid program. The group would be tried to convene its first meeting by August twenty-first of two thousand twenty-four, submit its findings and recommendations to the form of a proposed legislation to the General Assembly by December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and ceases to exist on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. They authorized up to six meetings and a maximum of ten meetings. That passed, that is the school aid program. I don't know if Paul's familiar with eight seventy-one or eight eighty-seven. Uh the other section of that is section four H pre-programmed construction aid. The working group shall consider whether and to what extent state aid should be made available to school districts that begins construction projects prior to the establishment or renewal of the state school construction aid program. Those are the pertinent, it's about thirteen pages. There's a lot of legal stuff. You guys can still read it, you just have to go to the General Assembly website. Uh eight eighty-seven, which possibly might be vetoed, is the yield bill. Current yield is, I believe, then ninety-eight, ninety-three, which gives us a tax rate which is not that important. That says the important thing there is possible reinstatement of Vermont's excess spending adjustment. Act one twenty-seven suspended the excess spending through fiscal year twenty-nine that has been repealed. So that's section nineteen repeals that uh suspension and makes the threshold effective July first, two thousand twenty-three, meaning that we're to be used for the calculation of tax rates in fiscal year twenty-six, I believe twenty-seven. I don't know if it went anything past that. Another important part, since we're already, we're well, section nineteen.
Mark, you have thirty more seconds.
Okay, a second, I'll get it at the end because I don't have enough time. Section nineteen, for all bonds approved by voters prior to July twenty-first, July first, two thousand twenty-four, voter approved bond payments for principal and interest shall not be included in court and court educational spending for purposes of calculating excess spending pursuant to things. I am still waiting to hear from A O E, Agency of Education. Cassandra Ryan, Julie Briggs Campbell, Bob Donahue, and Julie Richter from J F O, because there seems to be a lot of confusion in Montpelier about where this is going to go.
Thank you. Um Ed, did you have a hand up?
Yes, I.
Your name is and your town?
Edwin English, which is. Um I have a concern about this uh black roots. I think it could be because if you live in wind and what starts at late a sliding snowstorm, you wouldn't have a flat roof. But I was concerned on any building.
Thank you. That that would be a cost-saving measure. That's the reason that it was discussed. Somebody else has a hand up, I think. Kelly, no.
GL thermal will not work. I'll tell you guys, fifteen, twenty years ago, granted, say, like it's over, let's not try it. Very empty thousand mile, but never would stop on hardware, tried it, but millions of dollars, thousands of dollars in the system didn't work. And like Ed said, yes, you need a slow group. Okay. And uh just like, and then between option one, two, and three, on the bottom lines of bottom three, you said you're gonna get more students and stuff like that, and on the very bottom line of of Plan B, the new school, you say we will probably not attract new students. I mean, and have you done course samples for this building? Firstly, there's nothing wrong with this building. You can put a slow group on it, you know, have you done course samples and slap and version? You have engineered structural building command, give you a report of the existing buildings. You know, I mean, we've taken buildings two hundred years old, built it, re-relotted them, fix them, and they're back in service. And you can also put solar panels in every room or something like that. They make solar windows that look like a window. There'll be a room where you can put propane heaters in there. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of options you could do with that. Now, are you gonna have wooden frame or metal frame or gypsum board or or plywood walls? What are you gonna do? Nobody's, nobody's seen the interior of the of the buildings. You know, you haven't showed the the hallways and the drill system, they're having five, they have G rock ceilings. You know, there's a lot of costs that's gonna save them because, you know. And why do you need a view? Why do you need a mountain view for the kids to look out the window? They're, they're sitting in the schoolroom, looking, looking, talking. Thank you.
If you'd like to speak to anything that.
I can speak to a couple of the comments. Uh, there was some geo tech investigation that went into the, the compaction of the soils and viability for the geothermal. Thermal wells that was conducted on the site. As far as investigation into the, the envelope. We know the, the current building envelope doesn't meet the energy code. I mean.
In the long, we're talking about structural.
Yeah, and.
You've never done a core sample.
So into the steel?
No, into the ground. Never done course samples of the slab and what's underneath the slab.
You, you, there were geotech, there was geotech.
You're talking about dual thermal wells.
It, it's also for the.
Totally different.
It, it's also for the design of the slab, of, of the slab. It's compaction test of the, of the soils. That, 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 those were done preliminary.
There was also an extensive structural report, especially on the gymnasium, uh, that was incorporated into our cost estimate.
Because lack of names.
Now.
When Steve Charles did his year, they cut his budget and, you know.
The structural. Structural items with no lack of things, it was something else.
And incorporating views would be a question for the architect. We're not the architect.
Pamela. Thanks, Pamela Fraser Barnard. Uh, well, I wanted to first just say thank you to the board and to the panel for all the work that you're doing. And I really appreciate that you're. Taking this up and reviewing new options and everything, the work that you're putting into it. Um, that said, I'm really surprised to see three options here that are in the same. Price tag range as the bond that just failed. And it didn't just fail by a little, it failed by ten percent, which is pretty significant. And to me, um. And, you know, to me personally, and, um, what that says. Um, is that people can't afford that price tag. People can't afford that price tag range. So. Um, the, the full renovation is just something that I don't think is going to pass. Uh, anything that's in a hundred million price tag range. I do not think it's going to pass. And I really urge you. To consider what can be done for less than that. And maybe it's a, you know, a longer plan and some of the costly windows get built into a different front, not a box, you know, over. Over a period of time, but there are a lot of school buildings from this era that are renovated and they look fantastic. So this is not impossible. Another thing that I just like you and I really ask you to consider taking off the bullet points for arguments for the new bills. Or any very expensive bill is the, um. The idea that we're going to attract new students with a nicer building. Because the birth rates are completely flat. They've been decreasing for twenty years, not just in our area, but the entire country. And every single school district in ascending town within hours radius has a decreasing and all that. So there, it's not that, that we don't attract them because, uh, our building isn't nice. They don't exist. So, uh, I don't think that's a compelling bullet point. I also urge you to tell us. What the current goals for modern teaching learning are. That's always used as a bullet point to tell us why we need a new building. But nobody ever tells us what that means. I am an educator and I don't know what that means, so. Um, I also think probably renovations could accomplish some modern. Uh, spaces. And I find it kind of funny that you're getting rid of, you wanted to get rid of the newbie lab, which is a very modern, uh, teaching role. Thank you. Um, so. I guess about it. I just, I really want to see this building renovated and fixed. Um, but I, I think it really needs to be a four and one.
Thank you. Was somebody in the back who had a hand up? Uh, yes, sir.
Yes, uh. I agree.
Your name is.
I was an eight-year selectman chairman of the board a long time and I was also a board member up here for four years. Back in the late seventies and early eighties. And the last two speakers are completely correct because geothermal. Groundwater table here is at thirty-eight degrees in Florida at seventy-two. So it's feasible to have it in Florida in geothermal here, but heat, you have to, have to put too much heat in. Or get the temperature of that water up to where it's good for geothermal. Okay, going on. Would start, these, I looked at these options. Are you planning to put one of these options before the town? Towns are on.
That's a question for me, but.
That's a, a more decision to be made, sir.
Well, I would suggest you don't because anything that costs almost as much as the last option will go down. In Woodstock, it used to be, doesn't know probably, but three to five percent raise in the town budget and tax rate. Was all they would stand. And I don't think anybody's going to stand the kind of tax rate increase you're going to have to have to build under the school. The other thing is, you know, you're planning to keep the daily gymnasium in any of these options.
The renovation option keeps it existing.
What's that?
The renovation option, option A, keeps the existing high school.
It's awesome. Because I used to referee around this state here. And this, this gym was in the top four or five south of Route Four. For shape to have playoffs or anything. You probably need to reconstruct the locker room and stuff like that. Well, I think we should keep that gymnasium and I don't see any reason to do the fields at all. We keep the fields. Those two options, you're going to save quite a bit of money. I know the original high school probably needs some reconstruction. But brick doesn't go away. Concrete doesn't go away. You don't need to tear it all out. Just need to retrofit it.
Thirty seconds.
And, uh, I don't think we need to go into all our expense. We tear those walls out. And then we go in and retrofit those rooms. Down there. And then in the meantime, we use a middle school. For some of the students and this gymnasium in this building for some classrooms. And that's the way we should go. If you put any one of those three options up before the voters. I guarantee you they'll go down.
Thank you. Uh, Jim?
Jim, halftime at Killington. Eight, eight, seven in place and eight, seven, one in place, maybe it'll be vetoed, whatever. Um, if you read through it, I hope every single one of you board members have a copy of eight, eight, seven. Um, it's going to tell you what the state is looking at newer and fewer. About how it could possibly any dollar over will be, uh, also in the penalty phase. I have questions as far as saying two thousand and twenty-six, this building could start. I asked over eight months ago for reports on what work was done for engineering, um, such as in the stormwater. Um, I was given a report that referenced back to two thousand and seventeen, um, stormwater permits. Um, Kurt, right now, let's be honest, if you just had to go in for a brand new stormwater permit. It's two, three years to get all your information back or whatever on that. I mean, we're sitting here and we're telling folks that we, it's going to take a couple of years to do some of these other things that are. I agree, it's way out of price anyway, but this escalation cost, you're not even in front of act two fifty yet and you don't even. Kurt, you also know they just said again, in A and R setbacks from rivers and streams, you know, also talking about flood areas. I mean, this. But you need to check at eight, eight, seven. At least wait for the state. To tell us how to state, how they're going to go about taxing these schools. Okay, that's what we need to do. Geothermal, I have to disagree with all yous. I'm getting a six thousand square foot house at my home with a three and a half ton system. And it works perfectly fine some twenty something years later. Whoever says it doesn't work, it becomes, it, 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 in Vermont, I'm sorry. But that's the fact. So please, just the board members, read eight, eight, seven. And you decide if you should have a vote in September before you know the rules. Or should you wait to March when the rules are going to be coming out as Mark has said. So we're supposed to have reconvene and have answers at the end of December. That's, that's my suggestion to you folks. I mean, if you think right now, your tax rate. When you have your reappraisal will be a dollar sixty-eight.
Twenty-five seconds. I thought I was going to get told at thirty, but I thought.
Okay, you know, within three years, it will be two dollars to twenty to two dollars and thirty-five cents at your hundred percent. And if you think houses at five hundred now at a million, people are going to come here and spend twenty-two thousand five hundred plus, the local share. You get crazy. So wait till March and get the answers. Select, I mean, school board members, please read eight, eight, seven.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes. I would be surprised, although I live in Woodstock, so I think comments can be related to other ones. So regarding eight, seven, I don't know what's going to happen with that, but my understanding is that the way it's written. Any bond would basically cost us double. It's like not even an option to do a bond if it stays the way it is. So, or at least that's the way I understand it. Now, why is that happening? Why are they doing that? They want to stop construction? Now, I don't know why, but there's a lot of rumors going around that the state wants to make hub high schools. And there are rumors going around that say, whether we do this or not, if the state wants to make hub high schools, even if we do this. They could say we're closing you down. So I think it's extremely risky to make any financial decisions. When you don't know how you're going to be taxed and you don't know if there's going to be hub high schools and we're not going to be part of that. Now, if there's a way for Woodstock to be the hub and be bigger and make an agreement with the state and make it work with other towns, that would be fantastic. But at this point, it's seems like a real gamble to be putting our money on the line without knowing what is going to happen. In those situations. And the other thing I wanted to say regarding this bill happening. I talked to someone at the state level that handles flood control and rivers. He told me that he met with members of the board twice. He said his plan would never fly. And he said, did they go through act two fifty yet? And I said, as far as I know, not at all. So I don't know what's going on with the approvals with building in a flood plain. But due to displacement, building another building while keeping this one up. I was told that's really questionable. So I think that telling everyone this is easy, like Jim was saying. When we have to still go through act two fifty and we don't even know if they're going to say you can build this much space in a flood plain. Which will displace too much water, even though you're not in the flood zone. I think that's important. I think it would be good if you have answers about that. And security about that to let people know so that we don't worry about that. And the last thing I wanted to say is the way these, um, options have been presented as. It, one of you said something like you made them kind of like to get to the same goals as the new bond was. I feel like that's the wrong way to go about this. If you guys had actually done the listening tours that you proposed you were going to do after the bond fail. Then, okay, then, um, maybe you would have heard from people. Like I would say a better way to go about this would be to say. Okay, well, what do we think people can afford? And maybe you pick some numbers, ten, twenty, thirty, fifty million or something like that. And you say, what can we get? Let's start with this, with our safety, with like what we absolutely need. Let's put those line items in one by one and present to people, this is what we can get for these different numbers. And what do you think about that? That's a better way to go about this instead of trying to recreate the bond in a renovation. That, that's really not what people are saying no to. People are saying no to the whole thing. To wanting less. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Maybe just a couple of brief comments, a couple of points. The school district is working with, um, civil engineer, C E A, um, um, environment or C E A, uh, engineering. Uh, Dave Marshall is a civil engineer. He's very much up to speed on all the act two fifty requirements. And the stormwater consultant is Andreas Terrazno. He's also very much up to speed with. All of the new three acre rule requirements, which are, which are new stormwater rules. Specific for, that are required specific for this site. So a, a significant design has gone into the. The, the option that went out to, went out to bond. No designs have gone into any of the other options and they would be a requirement that has to get done during that design development. Timeline that we mentioned, uh, would be a, a year and a half, but significant investigation has gone into both the. Act two fifty and the stormwater designs for the existing proposed addition, uh, or new building. Uh, and then just a, a minor comment relating to the, uh, act eight seventy-seven, I, I think it is. Eighty-seven, yeah, thank you. Uh, not that I'm not up to speed on that, but what I do know that that. Subcommittee is going to be doing from now until December is they're going to be looking at requirements for school. School districts, um, to go through in order to be eligible for school construction aid. Like an example of that is they're going to require. Require school districts to go through a master planning process, very similar to the master planning project, process and strategic, but. Planning process that we're doing right here. And they want those, uh, master planning processes to not be driven solely by architects. So that these, you know, proposed, uh, designs aren't just simply looking at aesthetic upgrade, but they're looking at the full. You know, programmatic, um, um, benefits, um, to, to the future projects. But that's one of the pieces that committee will be looking at. I can, I can speak to all of them.
One other comment related to act two fifty, all the options have to obviously meet act two fifty. We are not exempt, uh, from meeting those, those options. One thing we do know for fact. Is that option three, the footprint of that option matters the most in terms of, um. Act two fifty requirements and, um, uh, stormwater, um, co- coverage requirements. The existing high school and middle school has to come down. Uh, in order to meet that requirement. Option two, the hybrid, because it's three story. It's going to be a much larger, much smaller footprint when both the middle school and high school are in place. So that will clearly be, uh, the act two fifty requirements, uh, for coverage. Even when, when the middle school and high school come, come down. Uh, there is also one thing that is not, um. That the school board, school board's aware of is the, uh, three acre rule, uh, requirements. Even though this is not a priority site, without any, um, construction at some point. At least some of the, uh, parking lots are going to have to, uh, meet or those, um, covered requirements regardless of any school. Um, construction.
I would like to just assure the public that it's listening that we are following all of these bills, all of these. Um, various rumors and untruths and half truths coming from Montpelier. Uh, a number of the board members are tied into that along with our, uh, financial, um, manager and superintendent. So. We are very well educated on these things at this time. We've been highly attuned to what's coming out of Montpelier. And I could just say for forty-four years that I've been part of, underneath the A O E as a teacher. Um, they change their minds all the time and they don't make anything clear and that has not changed. So what they say today could be very different next week. Um, until it's actually voted through, it's, it's, you know, anyone's guess. Julie, you had your hand up.
Yeah, and it's going to be two questions because it seems like people are asking two. My question is, this current septic system, any renovation? I know there's a septic truck here two weeks ago dealing with their system. So that's one thing. The other question to the board in the committee is, did you consider actually moving the little, well, Prosper Valley? It would be a true six, seven. That's it. And, oh, I'm a firm one, and I'm also the bookkeeper here. Sorry.
We probably end this with the first hard question.
Septic.
In the renovation option, we're assuming to replace, you know, all major systems, which includes plumbing. Uh, in, in wastewater. That, that will, you know, require cutting into existing slabs and then selling new. You know, wastewater system, system. That that would be. Not that that level of design has gone into it yet.
As a configuration committee, maybe someone that can speak to this, but as far as I know, there's been a discussion of making Prosper six, seven.
And the capacity of that building. And the capacity of that building is not such to, to increase beyond a hundred and ten students? Oh, no, I did mean renovate that there and, yeah. So again, we have those issues with water plane and, you know, when we did the renovation, there were concerns that you didn't exceed the current footprint as well. That's why we didn't pursue that. Thank you. Michelle. Michelle, the home guy in the one song. Um, Carrie went to the same thing with you did, the same thing we did. I contacted thirteen representatives throughout our state. Education representatives and giving a lot of mixed messages about the hub. And I wanted to point out quickly that. If that did happen, if Montpelier did shift. And designate a hub school and the south was not a hub school, we'd still be having to be responsible for that though.
Um, you didn't. After I graduated from Woodstock. Given uh, uh, the issues in Woodstock itself. With our current water aqueduct company. And all the uncertainty about what's happening um. And their inability to make certain upgrades or even provide. Necessary water to buildings in Woodstock. Uh, currently, and nobody knows actually, the uh town Woodstock has. A letter of intent to purchase, but everything seems to be up in the air. With so many of the things that we're hearing this evening or discussing, they're so uncertain. Why can't you just? Fix what absolutely needs to be fixed now and see what's happening. As we go through the rest of this year and into next spring, when we might have a clearer picture of what's going on. Before any kind of commitment could be made to such an enormous expense. Thank you. Wendy, did you ever get enough? Okay. Kelly?
So Kelly Lynn from Woodstock. And like I said before, the state came in here a few years ago and. Did a walkthrough with the board. And told them what needed to be fixed and they had a price of between twelve and eighteen million dollars. Like I said, I have a email of it. I'd be more than happy to share it with anybody, because when you're going with a hundred and twenty million dollar school. That's gonna be a flash front, which is a perfect example for a school shooting. And everybody's worried about that. So we're gonna get waterproof glass. That's a question.
I don't believe that's part of the design, but that would be a question.
So there you go. There's a school shooting. But the other part is, is how long is this? Uh, bond that we're gonna get? How long does it take to pay that back?
Uh, thirty to forty years, I think it tends.
So the tax is gonna go up. Fifteen, eighteen percent? Well, everybody in this room. So if it's forty years. I'm not gonna be here in forty years. So does that mean that that tax rate's gonna stay the same for my grandson and my great-grandson? And they're gonna keep paying it? Because nobody here is gonna be here to say, oh, we gotta stop, we gotta minus off eighteen percent off taxes now. So that's a really big concern. Because what I brought up at one of the other meetings was the. Senior solarium that got built, got built right on top of the sewer line. And. Oh, well, we didn't know, we didn't know. Well, then who was responsible? Is PCI gonna be responsible for future additions and know where all these pipes are? Are they gonna be contractors? I highly doubt it. It's gonna be somebody else that comes in, says, oh, well, we can do it for you for this amount of price. Meanwhile. You're building another addition on top of another septic. And then you come down to taxpayers and say, well. So. The main question is why, where did this ever go? Because it was into Vermont standard, because the state finally put it there on the twelve to eighteen million dollar. Fix. Thank you.
I forgot to say one thing.
I was gonna have. One of you address that twelve to eighteen million dollar. Things.
Regarding putting a building on a septic one?
No, 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 the, the report that. Came out several years ago.
Oh, yeah, I can speak to that. Yeah. So there, there was a study done by Bureau Veritas that was. Um. The Agency of Education, you know, through a, a legislation bond that passed. Was to hire Bureau Veritas to do an assessment of all of the schools in the state. For the purpose of understanding the magnitude and cost. Um, of the needs for all of these schools around the state. To, to be able to uh add that to the conversation to bring back the school construction aid. So we, we actually worked with Bureau Veritas um on that contract. We didn't do the, any of the evaluation. Collected a lot of the utility data and whatnot um. From each of the schools that went into their, their energy modeling, but. Just so you understand, that was a, a replacement cost value. Um, so I'll give you an example. What they do is they go in and they take an inventory of all your existing systems, you know, your roofs, your mechanical equipment, um, you know, your, your plumbing lines and. They plug those pieces of equipment into a, a software that comes up with what is the average. Uh, lifecycle of that equipment. And then it spits out a, a dollar amount to, to replace that equipment and come. But what it doesn't do is it doesn't take into account additional costs for the contractor to do the, what's called the general conditions. It doesn't take into the count the, the, the design time that goes in for the architectural engineer. It doesn't take into account any code uh upgrades that are required, given you the example of, of the roof replacement. Where you have to, in order to meet the energy code, you have to uh increase that, the insulation on the roof. It's just a, a replacement cost for that rubber membrane. But then there's the added costs that you have, that are gonna be incorporated into that when you have to bring those systems up to current code. Um. So if those costs, costs were strictly replacement costs, they also didn't address things like ADA accessibility. It was part of the report to say, these schools don't meet current ADA requirements, but there were not dollars associated. Into bringing those buildings up to that current ADA code.
I'm gonna have to wait until everyone's had a chance for a first question.
Ask him about what he was saying. I, if you put on any roof, are you required to bring it up to code?
Yes, you are. You're required to meet the energy code in the state of Vermont.
If you do anything to the roof or just if you replace it completely?
If you replace it completely.
And you're telling me my answer, my question, that they didn't allow for this?
They did not allow for that because it wasn't part of the cost.
That's your word?
All right. Not gonna go into.
Okay.
Hold the debate. So, are there further questions?
Um, Raina.
So, um. Raina Bishop, Reading, Vermont. Um, I work for the central office. One of my job duties is your district central registrar. Meaning I enroll, I process the enrollment of every student for the entire district. You should know that. Um, the principal of an elementary school in ascending town called me on behalf of the students. Asking specifically if we were looking at a new build, because the students were excited about that prospect. And were hoping to at least realize some of the benefits of a new build in their junior and senior year. Um, I have already enrolled more Ludlow students this year, um, even before the end of this school year than I did the entire year last year. Uh, I was visited by a parent who specifically wanted to know what towns the family could move to. Specifically to send their child to this school. Uh, whether it was in district or ascending town. So while I do understand the concept that we're not going to experience. An explosion of babies, we're not going to experience a suppo- an explosion of students. You're not, I, I would ask you to not necessarily look at it as we need more bodies. You need the bodies that are going elsewhere to come here. And they're interested in the new bill. So if we get five Hartman students out of their eighty, that's seventy-five kids going elsewhere. So. Obviously, we're not going to attract all of them, but we're not going to attract anymore if nothing changes.
Is there anyone online from Zoom?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Barbara Kennedy and I live in Woodstock. And there was a comment earlier that there had been some assessment. Of the square foot cost of similar buildings in the United States. Is there a similar? School? High school, middle school. All this design. Already completed in the United States. Operational. And where is it? And what is the grand success grade while the students would? Views and attractions and all of that.
Yeah, so when I was providing cost per square foot numbers, I was, I was talking about what we've seen in Vermont. There hasn't been a ton of school construction in Vermont. The most recent one that's underway right now is Burlington High School, so that's the most recent and relevant data point.
I'm not talking about cost. I'm talking about the design. Is there another school? Like this? That's operational somewhere in the country. Approximately same size. That has a student enrollment and has a dramatically positively impacted or procrastinatively. The student enrollment and their success rate. Does anybody have an idea or does that not know?
I don't know if that might be a question for the architect. I, I don't know that I see you doing.
Unless we could provide some.
Yeah, we're gonna have really an architectural question for the architect. He's designed. Quite a few schools recently. So I'm sure we can provide an answer for that, but uh, we did not design it. Uh, we are currently working on the Burlington High School, so we can talk about costs, but program, I don't know.
Well, I'm just thinking, we can't be the only state and the only school that needs this kind of discussion and this kind of evaluation. So if one exists like this somewhere involved, let's see what the results were.
Yeah, I think one thing that's unique about Woodstock is the number of. Um. School choice schools. That could funnel into the school district that could be potential, uh, you know, future students. That, that scenario probably doesn't exist in lots of other places, but.
We spoke to enrollment, so that would be a piece that would answer the enrollment, that the potential. But. We've said in our meetings that we're building for the students we have now. We hope to retain them. And if we have capacity to add more, we would gladly add more.
I will say this with the option three. We can always put back that wing if it is reduced. It can go right back in fifteen years from now if we need it. That, that is built into the option three then.
Anybody else have a first question? Roger.
Roger, Mary Killington. What is the current enrollment in the middle of high? And how many graduated this past year?
Four fifty-five and we have eighty new graduates.
Four fifty-five total. Seventy-five. Okay, and we got eighty graduates, so not much more. You know, my daughter Elizabeth graduated in nineteen twenty fifteen. They were about eight. So the enrollment. So the enrollment is pretty much stable. If we can keep it stable, we're lucky. Um, secondly, to, to um, the investigative on. The wastewater and Act two fifty investigative, is there actual permit applications in process?
No, you entered twice.
Can you speak to how long that process is to apply approval?
We, it was addressed by the civil engineer. I would have to look back on the details, but it was within. Within our timeline that we have established to, to go to construction.
Days, weeks, hours. Can you give me a number, please? That wasn't regular answer.
Probably a. Six-month process.
Minute.
Yeah. I, I don't wanna speak to.
I doubt that.
An email that I, I read about eight months ago, but it was within the construction timeline that we had established.
That's a very um aggressive number.
Yeah, but we, we can provide a follow-up detail with that. Again, thank you for the civil engineer and we're not the civil engineers.
I've got to leave, but I've got to tell you one more thing. I talked to one of our distinguished, Roy Bates, Woodstock, in the meeting here. One of our distinguished county. Representatives of Montpelier. And I asked. How much money were you getting off of gambling bills we have? All the horse racing and all the um. Track tickets and all that. But it was originally reported, it was a hundred percent for education. And he departed, and he departed. I don't think I've ever seen a report that says how much each school is getting out of that education fund. Probably they're even using it in the general fund where it goes. Pay for things they can't. Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying. You need an accountability of that gambling account.
Thank you.
Somebody maybe can get it.
All right, anyone else? Um, well, Mark was first and then Pamela.
Okay, we talked a lot about uh. Construction for a square foot. Uh, this is a copy of a memo that Jim Finn and Bob Donahue. At AOE sent to me dated February sixteenth to Sherri Sousa for preliminary approval for school's construction. And the bottom line at the end was, they approved this project, the new building cost that they allowed, because they are only allowing. One hundred, you guys know this, one hundred and eighty dollars, one hundred and eighty dollars, one hundred and eighty gross square footage per student. At six hundred students. We're two sixty-three point thirty-three square footage. And at four fifty. I don't even wanna go there. And so. That's what they approved. So even if we got state aid, as Ben, I think, acknowledged to me when I met him working the other day. The maximum cost for state participation that we may get. Is going to be eighty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. Eighty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-four, five hundred.
Eighty-two mil.
What's that?
Eighty-two mil.
Yeah, eighty-two mil, thank you, Jim. So uh, the, the, the bullet points are very misleading. Vermont Education, AOE has approved this program. The only option with this designation, and they've agreed to fund if the state becomes available. Uh, Carrie, I, I know you said to be civil and I'm civil. I didn't like the way you denigrated the AOE. They're civil servants. I was a civil servant, you're a civil servant, a lot of us here are. They're doing their best they can. It's very complicated because the legislature actually has to act. And if we have an issue with what the AOE or the JFO is doing. The issue should be with the legislator, not with those organizations. They're just as much in the dark, as you said, as we are. And our legislators are the ones who have to set something up. And AOE, JFO, Tax Department, they're all separate. They work off of each other. And that's why they've been very careful not to say anything. What they've really been great at saying to me is, and I haven't heard from the board that often, we really don't know the answers to that question. You seem to have all these answers to the questions as based on this. Never willing to say, well, we're not sure. And that, that goes to transparency and accountability. And that's what's gonna get Bond asked, because I support. A new school if we can afford it.
Thank you, Mark. Pamela.
Um. I. My, my son graduated from uh the high school last year and he'd probably be really annoyed if he knew that I was gonna share something that he said. But he um. Uh, he and I were talking about the, the possibility of these high school hubs and all of that, you know, that's being discussed and, and really um. I, I understand that and I think a lot of people understand that conversation as a continuation of Act forty-six. Because it's the same problem Vermont. Is losing enrollment numbers and we can't afford. I mean, it's a very serious problem. So it's, it's a continuation of looking for solutions. Act forty-six was actually not successful in saving money at all, but. It's that thinking, you know? So anyway. We were talking about it and he said, do you think the school board is being proactive, talking to other high schools? In the area like Hartford or whatever. Uh, because that would be, if the state's gonna do it to them anyway, why don't they? Try to build a partnership. Along the lines of something that would, you know, make more people happy than being forced, because nobody likes being forced into anything. So I thought, you know. I don't really love that idea in a lot of ways, but I also think it's really creative thinking and I think it's important to keep. Uh, minds open to all kinds of possibilities and especially to Jim's past point. We know so little about what is happening. And the new secretary of education is, is the signal that this is the direction we're going, more murders. Uh, so I think that, that we really need to take that very, very seriously.
And those conversations are happening, Pamela, with other districts around us.
That's great. I'll tell him.
Yes.
Yeah, they're learning. Um, Roy Bates had just left, he's a meteorologist. He knows more about geothermal than probably anybody in this room that'll get it. And I know several places they.
And I know several places they've put a lot of millions of dollars into it, it never worked. Um, second, um. Do you know what underground utilities are there underneath high school, underneath the football field?
But I would imagine that exploration has been done by by the.
Do you know what utilities are underneath that football field?
I don't personally know, uh, because I'm not the civil engineer.
Well, I do, I know what's underneath there. So you're going to have a contractor come in and rip up an eight inch water main that feeds the other side of the river? Or anything else that's in there? You know? Just like, just like you haven't done your homework.
Point of order, point of order, please, this is a comment section, we're not questioning, answering unless uh, it's deemed appropriate.
And your personal income tax supposedly is going to go up eighteen to twenty percent next year. So it's what you do, what you have to count, you know, keep this deep, no contact there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kurt Peterson has a couple of questions exactly right now, you can see right now.
If I pull up the chat, it pulls it up on the screen, you okay with that?
Uh, yeah.
It's in the chat, it's there.
Yeah, it's not coming up on mine.
There's, oh, we have a question on the screen.
You have a few. Can you see it?
This is straight from Kurt, I have it set to everybody. Wait, here we go. All right, Bernie. Oh, Bernie Bananas, um, so it sounds like a board member, um, not sure when I will get a chance to tell you this, okay?
Pronouncing that correctly.
Yeah, sure, can you read it? But I can't, I can't see it.
Sure, it says, has any consideration been made on placing solar from roof to the portico slash bay panel system in the parking area? Similar to Rutland High.
You guys remember this?
Yeah, I mean, one comment regarding that is option three B, it allows for a lot more solar when you do make the the roof flat. And the latest rendering does show that, um, all of the options can accommodate solar. But none, none of the options.
So the quick answer is yes, we've looked at putting solar over the parking lot. Uh, the difficult answer is that we're limited by state legislature. To not generating more than one megawatt of solar electricity. On our entire series of campuses. We already have solar at Rossford Valley, we have solar at West, we have solar at Redding. We've got a little tiny bit of solar here, we've got about two hundred and fifty kilowatts of solar, which only allows us seven hundred and fifty kilowatts that we can put on this campus. We have plenty of room to do that without pulling it over the parking lot. When we put a new building on here regardless of which design it is, as long as it's got the structural integrity to support.
What does she have, Randy?
So Kurt Peterson, during the run up to the bond vote, quite a lot of money was pledged to support the project. Did the failure of the bond affect the surety of those pledges?
Yeah, no, um, those, uh, all donors have reaffirmed their pledges for another, you know, continuation of the project.
David Steele Woodstock, why did you not factor in a smaller student target growth plan? What are your strategies for attracting this number of new students other than a new building?
Yeah, I mean, Kerry just spoke to, I mean, the the plan is to build for the existing population. Um, I mean, in terms of strategies, there's a lot of discussion, but nothing that's been made in terms of a plan. But um, the idea is to, I think we've all talked about it, um, tonight, you know, going out to Choice Towns is the is the immediate. Um, place where we would look to grow.
All right, Kurt Peterson has another question. In most towns in the district, property education taxes may be increasing by as much as twenty-one percent. Or even more, doesn't this put the repayment of a school construction bond in a new frightening perspective?
Yeah, it's a new baseline, for sure. And uh, as many people have said tonight, we're going to have to see what the state does, right? There's a lot of things that are in the works, combined developments.
All right, and last question, David Steele, how about improved programs and retention of quality educators? Not exactly sure where he's going with that.
We have very little turnover in in our school system, I'm aware of that because I sign all of the contracts. And I regularly visit with the HR person that has the openings listed, and there are really very few compared to. The districts that I see around us, if you go on school spring, uh, and look at that. So I think that our retention rate is quite good. Uh, is a housing factor more so than a interest in being in working here that causes some to not. Be able to take a job, sadly. So I I can answer that piece of it. Um, Bob?
Hey, as a public citizen, Bob Kringbomper, as one who's read the uh. Deep bore test pits for deep bore wells for uh, geothermal, temperatures pushing forty-nine to fifty degrees. Plenty of warming up for as many wells as the budget will allow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alisa, Alisa Charlo from Woodstock, I just wanted to comment on what's been coming up regarding enrollment and the education. I totally get the need for more enrollment, I don't know what the capacity of this current school is compared to what there is, but um. But I feel like, like a a few board meetings ago, or maybe more than a few ago, I remember talking about like. A loss of enrollment and it didn't sound like there was any analysis going on about why there were. Why there's a loss of each individual student. I feel like each student that is not enrolled here, that should be analyzed. Because a lot of them are going to Hanover and it's not because the building is ugly, it's because of the education. And um, I think there is a lot that can be gained by focusing on enrollment and the education. Is what will drive enrollment and the more enrollment we have, our taxes will go down regardless of this bond, the taxes are ridiculous. We need more enrollment, and I really think it's education based. One of my biggest concerns about the bond is I know it's going to come out of education in the end, which we can't afford even now. So I hope that I would encourage the board, if they're not already doing it, I hope that you are. To be analyzing every single student that leaves this district and why are they leaving? And what can be done here to keep and to get students here, not because the building's pretty. But because we're adding programs and doing a different type of education and doing more of what people are needing to go to in other places.
Um, Jim?
I'm going to just lead right back off in the beginning, we do not know what the state of Vermont's going to do. I'm asking you as board members to read and study it. We make the decision, that's an approach path, and after you find out where the state of Vermont is going to go. As far as building, I I'm really glad to hear that we're not counting on growing our population because the bond vote in March. Was all based on we were going to grow our population. And it's quite frankly, really nice reading in our newspaper then that Chillington doesn't know what they're talking about with their own village. That, you know, we know it's going to bring more students. Um, on a third part here, as I remember sitting with Mary Beth Bannos, the previous superintendent. Some seven or eight years ago, and sitting in her office and saying exactly what the state of Vermont is saying today. We need to reach out, we need to be looking at building a building for eleven hundred to twelve hundred students. And but first, we need to get the state of Vermont to say that we will be the hub. That was a conversation in the superintendent's office seven or eight years ago. And here we are talking about building a building just to, I don't know, like right now I'm being told, just to keep what we have today. But then, on the other hand, we want to get students from outside to come in. Well, where are they going to go if we just want to keep what we have today? Really, this comes down to, I believe there's eighteen board members. I hope there is nine or ten of you that can actually see and understand and trust like your own budget at your own house. You don't gamble on something until you know the game you're playing. And you will not know the game you're playing until after the state makes their decision. So please, at least nine of yous to ten, to actually say, I am not going to gamble with taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Josh?
So just looking at a number that was just tossed out, that we're planning on a school for the exact same population we have now. Which are currently supposed sixty thousand square feet. On option two B, we're planning that on ninety thousand square feet, so. That was the apples would be sixty thousand square feet, which would be sixteen million, which is cheaper, just pointing out.
I see. And this option one, uh, option two and option three. What's the, this F dash, F? Me.
You good?
I did.
All right, thanks. Uh, Kelly?
So in this new bill. Are we also looking to better our special ed for the. More needy of kids?
Yes.
Since the comment was made that only the. Professors and the high class people voted yes on the new bond and all of us lowlifes voted no.
I don't know where you're getting that, Kelly, I never saw that written down, nor have I heard that. I think that there are many reasons why people voted yes, and many reasons why people voted no, and I'm not sitting here conjecturing why.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with that. I think we, because I've done my research and I know there's a lot of people out there that have degrees, they voted no. But, yeah, the special ed, I had a kid in here that was special ed. And it went to the principal, who was Greg Schiller at the time, because his special ed teacher didn't feel that it was necessary. That he get a, just a card saying that he had completed all of grades, that's our school board. I mean, our superintendent, so.
But I'd like to think we do the best we can for all students.
And I know some that have already left here, they're a special ed, and gone to.
Yeah, special ed standards have changed pretty dramatically, just in the last twenty years, if you, I don't know, leave, I'm sure it is online, but. Pamela, I think this goes to the question that you asked about, you know, what are the new education standards? That's one area where they've changed dramatically and where the new bill would be set to address. And one of the concepts is that you need more one-on-one time with with kids in special ed programs. And the current building doesn't allow for as much of that as any building would, that takes more square feet, keep me honest, to share.
Right, I mean, we moved special ed classrooms all over this building, what the new bill designed, we have beds, we need resource room, we need support. Education intervention within each of the pods, so the students aren't traveling, this pod has been following, and so is the space.
Those will then will know special ed kids. Complete the top grades, they're going to get.
All students who meet their, their dispirations for graduation based on individual skills and abilities, always see them as something that affects them. And that's, that's based on an I T decision, that is not a superintendent's decision.
No, it is not, and. We won't get into that discussion because you're the one who fought Jeffrey Hittinga.
This is a comment on those students.
No, that's fine, I will sit, I will handle it, that's fine.
Uh, Peyton? Yes, uh, that reminds me, I think I read that the teacher-student ratio is one to twelve, is that correct?
I'm not clear on that, I can't answer that question.
Really?
No, well, maybe the soup, I mean, I could look back at a report and answer that question.
Well. Isn't that pretty basic information?
It's different for every campus, it's just not like at our fingertips.
Right, we get a report on that week, every month in our, in our board book. And um, I don't have it in front of me, but I know that every school has a different ratio based upon the population in the school. So if there is no more new build questions, I think we have had money.
Yeah, never mind. Could you please publish? Pictures in the standard and the value and something like that, what the interior of this building is going to look like? It's going to be brick wall, it's going to be, you know, brick walls, it's going to be sheet rock, gypsum board, let's, you know, steel studs, wood studs, let's, you know. Crapping on the floor, concrete floors, tile floors.
Wish the architect was here to speak to some of that, but definitely it's a combination of gypsum and block walls. Uh, there'll be some interior finishes for, you know, what more about hardscape interior finish. Where, you know, those, those interior finishes are are necessary for, you know, abuse of. Of wall resistance abuse, uh, it would definitely be, you know, a brick structure. And um, it's the steel construction, um, and, you know, interior walls are built with like gauge metal.
So that, that's going to depend on how much electrical system is going to be. You got to run N C cable, um, E M P, all that, whatever, you know? And you have no, you have no final cost.
Maybe even speak to the cost of the electrical.
You have no final cost of a new builder retrofit or anything.
Um, we we priced up a number of options, uh, are you speaking specifically to the new build or renovation or?
I mean, A, B, and C are one, two, and three, you have no, you don't have final cost.
Right, so we, we did our, um, most accurate. We did our most accurate estimate based off of what was, uh, there for the bond vote, which was a D D. Design development set of documents. So we go in, we take off every stud, every brick, and every uh, square foot of roofing, and we put pricing together for it. So that's, that's the most accurate pricing that that we've done to date. These options here are looking kind of at a higher level from a rough order magnitude standpoint.
Did you do one with a sloped roof?
Yes. Yep, sloped roof, flat roof, um, in, in the new build options, option three, there's a mix of both, flat roof and sloped.
Do you have a flat roof on your house?
I don't, but I also don't have a steel grained house.
Yeah. What do you have for a roof?
I have a pitch roof.
Material.
You've made your point.
Do you want to ask any personal questions of this house?
Do it after.
Okay, Doug, I think you've made your point, you've got it, um, Roger.
Um, Ben, Roger Barry Killington, I remember two years ago, last year, I came to the week and there was a special bond vote for a million dollars to continue the. Your study, or Russian assessment article, rather, uh, for a million dollars to continue your investigation into this new build. And I was on the board, new building, I think, when you first came on. And I've been hearing about the donors and the amount of donor participation that we're going to cover, the cause owners. But in my mind, I've never seen them materialize. What is the total amount that you have pledged?
Still three and a half million dollars, three and a half million off a hundred million dollars. What happened to those twenty and thirty million dollar numbers that were initially reported? I don't recall twenty and thirty million dollar numbers.
Well, I remember I'm hearing that that was what you were expecting, your expected donation.
Total campaign goals?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what the district needs, and this is, you're talking to me, so I'll speak for my, I guess, personal opinion here as support.
True handle.
Yeah, sure, um, we, we really need to recognize that with the kind of volatility that we're all seeing at the state level. That uh, there needs to be more development that happens at the school level. And I think you, there's plenty of good examples around the country, some people have suggested looking at other schools. Um, public schools that have been able to stand up development offices, that's something that I, you know, if we could get a little wiggle room in our budget, I'd really like to see us invest in. That's long-term thinking, that's like, you know, you've got a thirty-year bond, if you've got, you know, that much time to start subsidizing some of that, take it off the back of the taxpayers. I think that's effort that's worthwhile, but that's, you're asking me, that's, those are my thoughts.
And I remember, too, one just started to follow up on that, I remember at that meeting, there was a woman who was supposed to be coordinator. The fundraiser, the group coordinator, and after the community and the board, is that person still active on this process?
Yeah, Marlena McNamee, and she was extended by the uh, Woodstock Economic Development Commission. About twenty-five thousand dollars, maybe four months ago. Uh, one of the most recent things that Marlena has done is, um, Bernie Sanders had a pot of federal money. Uh, we put in for an application for the stormwater system, part of the bill, that'd be about a million and a half dollars. Burlington High School was able to get that money last year's cycle, and so we're kind of following suit on. Burlington High School was able to get that money last year's cycle, and so we're kind of following suit on that. We're waiting to hear back. But those are the kind of things, kind of money that you chase.
So the money is still there, but it's still minor comparatively to the overall cost.
Yeah, so.
Two percent maybe.
Right, but she's someone who's, you know, a hard-time fundraiser.
No, no, I'm not blaming her. I'm just saying the overall no, Marlena, I'm sure, well, doing her job much as she can. I'm just saying overall commitment from the community doesn't seem to have changed much in three or four years.
If it's quick, Kelly?
Yep. What is, what's going to happen with the existing concrete if we do a complete rebuild? Where is it going to be held to? Where is it going to be dumped? How much is that going to be costing?
Yeah, so any, yeah. Right, yeah, so any kind of, um, you know, with with the demolition of the existing buildings, anything that's, uh, that can be salvaged. Uh, and when I say salvage means for reuse. So oftentimes, concrete's taken away, crushed up, turned into aggregate that can be used for road construction and any number of things. So that would be separated and removed from the site. But things like metal probably will also get separated.
Yes.
And go, go, go to, you know, inside.
Well, yes, you can bury metal, you can bury concrete, but not metal.
Yep, yeah, most of these landfills like having concrete because they have to put a a layer of, I I don't really know the correct term, but it's more of a harder aggregate on each lift of of waste.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, I do know that much.
Probably more than, I can explain.
All right, I want to thank everyone. Oh, Bob, did you want to make a comment?
I'm going to move to a chair.
Okay. I'll thank everyone first. All right, thank you all for coming. If you have continuing questions, we solicit uh, your opinions and your views. Uh, we're hoping to have in each community some way of uh, speaking to your board members. Um, you should probably be looking through in the standard the amount of times and the listeners, if you use those, and also social media, and we're making those invitations to you. So thank you very much. Thank you to you folks for your questions and the answers, and you're very helpful to us tonight.
Thanks, thanks, everyone.